Something came up on the screen that says Shelley's iPhone. But now it's gone. Are you checking the chat?
Six thirty, Mayor.
All right. Six thirty, I'm going to call a meeting to order and we will stand and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Because this is an electronic meeting, I have a statement I need to read, so bear with me. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council. And it's being held via conference call pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen D point zero two one in response to the COVID nineteen emergency. Let me please remind those who are on the conference call line, please mute your phones until you are asked to speak. Also, please identify yourself before you speak. As required by the statute, all votes will be conducted by roll call, so each member's vote on each issue can be identified and recorded. Also, if at any time a council member is not able to hear the discussion or one another, please interrupt me immediately to indicate so. Also, just a reminder to state your name before you speak, so you are easily identified. The public will be allowed to speak during the designated public hearing. You will be asked to state your name and address before you make your comment. The public is not allowed to speak during other agenda items unless you have a request before the council and the mayor has given you permission to speak. And with that, I'd just like to say a few things here. I have a proclamation first I would like to read. Whereas all people have a right to a healthy, sustainable environment, as well as economic growth and opportunity. And whereas trees provide many ecological and human benefits that are being diminished by changing temperatures and precipitation, more extreme weather events, and increasing pressure from pests, diseases, and invasive species. And whereas all of us, caretakers of our planet, have an obligation to combat climate change and environmental degradation to preserve the earth's beauty, as well as its resource. And whereas all of us can help build resilient communities and reduce the negative impact of climate change by planting and caring for trees and by using wood products to store carbon into the future. And whereas the city of Winona participates in the Green Step Cities Program and Tree City USA program to better meet our environmental obligations. And whereas the city of Winona is committed to building on this success and dedicated to inspiring action through local education and outreach. Now therefore, I'm Mayor Mark Peterson hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty, as Winona Earth and Arbor Day. And I think we can all use a little good news these days, and I've got a good news story here. There was a young man, gee, I forget his age now, he's ten or something like that. His name is Phineas Van Bosen. And he was going around the bike path and he saw an old tire in the lake. And he decided he needed to get that tire out of the lake. And he kept taking tires out and more tires and more tires and more tires. And he took somewhere something like eighteen or twenty tires out of West Lake Winona. It's amazing, and this kid is to be commended for that. And I'd like to present this award. And we'll mail it to him because he can't be here tonight. But it's a community service award presented to Phineas Van Bosen for your participation with the cleanup of Lake Winona. Presented with appreciation and gratitude in recognition of dedicated public service to the citizens of the Winona community. And I think we need to change precipitation to participation. Probably a lot of precipitation gets the tires out of the lake though, too. I also just want to general thank you to all the first responders and all the city staff and the hospital workers, the people working in the nursing homes and just everybody on the front lines here in our community to try to deal with this pandemic. And it's not easy, the blaze, the fire, they're all, they're all our heroes these days. And we can't thank them enough, but I just want to say thank you. And then also, there's been some questions and comments about the bike path. And some people have suggested that we make the bike path one way. And we've looked into that for various reasons, all of which I'm not going to take time tonight. But it's felt that the best way to handle the bike path is to, is to go two directions. And so we will continue that as long as we can. And again, it's all about social distancing and keeping yourself six, at least six feet apart from other people, still wearing masks whenever possible, and staying home as much as you can. And I appreciate the council members all calling in tonight and leading by example. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our city manager and city speaker.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I do, I also want to thank our employees of living beyond the call of duty. In fact, a lot of folks should be seeing a lot more city employees out and about. Park maintenance staff and the street crew especially will be out trying to get ahead of the weather. And we've landed on enough PPE for them to, and we believe we have a really strong plan to get them back out and get them productively working and safe. Also want to let everyone know that today is National Library Week. And we want to thank everyone at the library, all the supporters. I know we all miss the library, but they're doing some wonderful things online to try to make up for that. I sent an email to the council today about dredging in Pool Six. We've been notified by the Corps, I believe I stated at the last council meeting. So if residents see the Corps dredging and putting material on Latch Island, again, they're putting that material in an area that the council had already previously approved. They're not expanding that site, they're just reusing, they're just using that site that they have. And lastly, I want to see if Chad had something to talk about parks with some guidance.
Chad.
Mayor and Councilors, Chad Hubel. Just to piggyback on what the mayor had just said, the community has and certainly will take advantage of the park system as more pleasant weather is around the corner. I would simply like to state that the Parks Department is following the guidelines provided by the CDC, Minnesota DNR, Minnesota Health Department, and the governor's order as they relate to outdoor recreation. We believe our outdoor spaces are an excellent resource for the community during this time. Yet we implore the community to follow the social distancing guidelines and stay at least six feet apart, especially when using the Lake Park Path and our park trails. Thank you.
I guess finally, if the council has any questions, or the Fire Chief, Chief Bill is here off camera, but will certainly answer any questions you might have. And just to let the council know, the community know, that Fire Department has been coordinating efforts to try to get, take a more proactive approach to respond to the pandemic and working with other partners, the county and the Department of Health. We believe that they'll make a big difference as time goes on. If anyone has any questions for the chief.
Okay, thank you. I'll now have the city clerk to take the roll call. Members of the city council are either present in the council chambers or participating by conference call. Please indicate your presence by standing here as the city clerk calls your name.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurling.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Worsakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
And we will now go to the public hearing. Item two point one is the Black Squirrel Properties Comprehensive Plan Amendments Request for the Downtown Fringe to Limited Industrial. This is a public hearing, and Assistant City Planner Luke Sims is here to do a brief presentation.
And before we call on Luke, I have a short statement I'd like to read. For each public hearing, staff will make a short presentation, and then I will ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak to the matter. You must clearly state your name and address, and you will be given up to three minutes to make your testimony. I will call three times for public comment. Once the hearing is closed, the public may not participate in any discussion by the city council. And also, I want to remind the council, if you wish to make a motion, state the following. Aye, give your name, move to approve, and then fill in the blank. To second the motion, state aye, then your name, and second the motion. And with that, I'm going to declare the public hearing open and turn it over to Luke.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. For you today is an application for a comprehensive plan map amendment to three thirty West Second Street. Prepare a short presentation that you should be able to see on your screens now. As noted by the mayor and by the city clerk, this is an application from Black Squirrel Properties, not Central Square Properties as listed in your package. The land use map designation at this time is currently downtown fringe, which is the light pink area. In this case, the circled area is the property in question at the corner of Harriet Street, Second Street. The proposed land use designation would be limited industrial. Downtown fringe is an area supporting the central downtown core with a similar mix of uses with a lower intensity. It includes an arts district, medium density residential, mixed neighborhood retail offices, employment centers, public spaces, satellite marketing facilities. Alternatively, limited industrial would be areas for manufacturing, warehousing, and distribution. Uses that have few outside impacts and are or can be located in relative proximity to non-industrial uses. Property in question is shown here. This is the current zoning map, which is mixed use downtown fringe with I two heavy industrial to the west and mixed use downtown core to the southeast. The application intent and review process is laid out here. The applicant intends to use the existing structure and property for climate controlled self-storage, which is not allowed use in mixed use downtown fringe and would require comprehensive plan change. In this case, downtown fringe limited industrial, followed by a rezoning for mixed use downtown fringe to I one. In order to pass the comprehensive plan, they must have three elements. Is the amendment consistent with the policies and objectives of the comprehensive plan? Is the amendment being requested due to changes which have occurred since the adoption of the plan? And will the amendment have an undue excessive impact on public health, safety, and welfare? Taking a look at the land use downtown revitalization and housing plan section of the comprehensive plan, we find that mixed use districts provide adequate transition to industrial or auto oriented commercial property, mixed use in the downtown area with a broad mix of business, encouraging mixed use in still from industrial areas are the goal of the downtown fringe designation. Similarly, have changes occurred since the adoption of the comprehensive plan in two thousand and seven? The area is still a transition area undergoing development and redevelopment, including recent completion of a nearby mixed use property to the southeast. Additionally, the Winona Bridge project has significantly affected properties directly to the east and applying to redevelopment. Will the amendment have an undue excessive impact on public health, safety, or welfare? The applicant's proposal of a climate controlled storage facility reuses the existing building as it stands. However, an industrial designation will have it flooding directly a commercial building to the east, which is currently operated at base hardware. Additionally, as part of the planning commission deliberations, future industrial uses may lead to uses that are not compatible with surrounding mixed use redevelopment, downtown adjacent properties, and the recreation opportunities spreading to that area. Commission took action in January of two thousand and twenty to voting to direct staff to bring back a resolution and denial. On February tenth, two thousand and twenty, the planning commission voted unanimously to adopt a resolution recommending denial. The commission's findings find that, one, the benefits of redesignation flow only to the developer because it sets the stage for a change in use that is not in accordance with the surrounding blocks and the future land use designation of the city's two thousand and seven top plan. Two, the potential uses supported by the limited industrial designation are incompatible with the existing commercial, office, and mixed use properties adjacent to the property. And three, the proposed designation of limited industrial is not consistent with the policies and objectives of the comprehensive plan in that location, such as mixed use redevelopment of downtown adjacent properties in a major principal corner near new office and mixed use development and recreation. Before the council today are three options. One, deny the request of the motion to adopt the findings of the planning commission and introduce the attached resolution for denial. This only requires a majority vote of the council. Two, approve the request. If this is the case, the council shall state on the record findings supporting approval of the requests related to the three comprehensive plan amendment criteria. A motion to adopt stated findings and introduce the attached resolution of approval would be in order. This requires a super majority vote. Or three, you may modify the request. With that, I'm available for questions.
Okay. Council members, questions for Luke?
Mayor George here.
Okay, go ahead, George.
Luke, as of right now, the building that we're looking at, is that the complete old Sears store or just part of it?
It's the western portion, which was subdivided off.
Okay, okay. Now, what can the, what can they do in this business right now?
In the mixed use downtown fringe, you can do a mixed use with a commercial office, retail on the first floor and apartments above. You could do a straight apartment building. You could do all offices, all commercial, all retail. Though really, the limitation here is on the self-storage, which we classify as a personal service storage, as opposed to a warehouse in use, for example.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions from council members? All right. I'll ask if anybody else wishes to speak. Does anybody representing Black Squirrel wish to speak? See somebody. You do? Is somebody from Black Squirrel calling in? Wish to speak, go ahead. He's just listening. All right. I'll ask again, anybody else wish to speak to this issue? I don't know if that was three or not, but I'll ask one more time. Anybody else wish to speak? Hearing, none? I will declare the public hearing closed and ask if there's a motion by council?
Aye, Paul Scholmeyer moved to deny the request.
Eileen Mueller, I second that.
Okay. Further discussion?
Clarification, this is Al.
Okay, go ahead, Al.
So you're adopting the findings of the planning commission?
Was that the case, Paul?
Yes, I'm agreeing with the planning commission, correct. Thank you. Paul Scholmeyer.
Okay, well.
I would just note that, I think we're all familiar with the members of the planning commission. It's actually a very diverse commission. And they do vote unanimously on occasion, but frequently they do not. And this is an interesting situation where they voted unanimously.
Okay. Other comments?
Yes, this is Pam. Pam, Ayden?
Yes, Pam.
Yes, I felt like the planning commission has really amply explored this topic and has discussed it very well. And I agree that to split the existing building into two different comprehensive plan areas is really not appropriate. I am, I am thinking that the planning commission did its work.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Mark, Michelle Alexander.
Okay, go ahead, Michelle.
Although I don't a hundred percent agree with all of their findings, because I think it is a little odd that you can't have personal storage, but you can have warehouse. I find it improbable and almost inappropriate to split an attached building into two different zones. And on that basis alone, I'm not in favor, but I have no problem with the idea of downtown personal storage. I don't think it would affect the neighborhood. In fact, with all the people that are living downtown now, I can only see it as an asset. But unfortunately, the way our zoning is set up, it does not allow for that. But I just don't understand the idea of splitting a building in half that is owned by the same entity. So.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment?
Mayor George here.
Yes, George?
I agree with Councilwoman Alexander and Ayden's remarks on this, on this issue. I know, like you say, you know, that I think the planning commission, I believe they have met four times or five times on this. And then, of course, there are some people that don't live in the neighborhood, but they're quite passionate about what this downtown area is going to be bringing and what should be going on there. And I really, I really appreciate your passion for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments before we vote? Just for the record, I will be reporting the motion for the same reason that people have already expressed. All right, I think we can vote.
Mayor Peterson. Councilman Thurling.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mueller.
Aye.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ayden.
Aye.
Councilman Worsakowski.
Aye.
Councilman Scholmeyer.
Paul? How do you vote?
Unmuted.
We can't hear you, Paul.
Paul Scholmeyer, unmute your microphone.
I'm working on it, how's that? Aye.
How do you vote? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right, motion passes.
You'll move on to unfinished business. Item four point one is the Invasive Aquatic Plant Management Grant Contract Approval.
All right, before we work on that, I've got a short statement I need to read. I want to remind the public, that, remind, or it's a reminder that the public is not allowed to speak during these agenda items unless you have a request before the council and I've given you permission to speak. Also, a reminder to the council that a roll call vote will be taken on each motion.
I'd make a motion to execute the included grant, Michelle Alexander.
I, Paul Scholmeyer, restricted that motion.
Okay, motion by Michelle, signed by Paul, wasn't it? Okay. All right. Any comments?
Al Thurling here, I have a couple of questions. First of all, one of the discussion points in the agenda item was, was talking about it running for just one year and, or, you know, at least for this particular item. And it will have very little, if any, long-term effect. And, and then the comment that weed harvesting is not shown to have any meaningful long-term effects. And the herbicides would be the suggested course of action. I guess a couple of questions. One, why, why doesn't the herbicide have any longer term effect than one year? And two, what are the plans to, in future, dredge that particular part of the lake or West Lake Winona?
We have John Howard here with us, and let's let John answer that question.
Mayor and council, in regards to the fact that the treatment only is good for one year, it's due to the fact that there's quite a lot of curly leaf pond weed that is currently in the lake. So it can repopulate from the existing areas that are nearby. So applying herbicide will kill, shouldn't kill just just all the curly leaf pond weed that's treated, but it will just repopulate the high abundance in the lake. I don't, we do not currently have plans to dredge the lake, to my knowledge. We are doing a study on Lake Fox first, and I made a public work schedule to add any comments about dredging. But that is something that would be quite costly, and I don't believe it would necessarily solve the curly pond weed long-term.
Al Thurling here, I have a follow-up question. How long do you think, or what is the lasting effect? Would the, would the curly leaf pond weed be gone for good after five years, ten years? Or what's the, what's the future projection of this particular herbicide? Solving this problem and what, what can we see happening once all the curly leaf pond weed is gone?
Well, it probably would be at least a five-year plan, probably longer, where we'd have to treat each section of the lake multiple times, simply because it is widespread. The benefit of having curly leaf pond weed removed would be there's a lot more fishing opportunity, as well as recreation. You're not, you know, paddling through the kind of weed mass that is there for June. So it would, would open up the lake for more use. And, and I think would also improve the appearance of the lake and the logical function. However, it is, it is a long-term commitment where we would have to be doing treatments multiple years. We got to treat probably most areas twice as we go around the lake to treat the areas. So it is, it is a, it is a long-term investment. And I want to make clear that this grant only funds this one treat. And I'm, I'm not confident there's going to be grants to cover future years. That's just the nature of the granting opportunities that come gradually. So that, that would be, we would have, we would hopefully develop a, if we were to do long-term planning, certainly develop a plan, a plan of action. But I think that plan wouldn't put something very similar to what we would do this year. So this is not a, you know, kind of a throwaway effort if we continue on for years.
Good, thank you.
So Mayor, this is Councilwoman Ayden. Yes, I do have a comment about this. And I am not really interested in putting this pesticide in the lake for one year. Okay, if we're, if the city is seriously entertaining taking this project on, then we need to think about at least a five-year, five-year budgeting process so that we can, so that we can follow through. I don't think it does any of us any good to just put pesticide in the lake for one year. I just heard John say that he didn't see any, you know, solid grant opportunities out there for continuing this, this program. And that makes a difference. How much, John, can you tell me, how much would it cost each year? What's, what would be the budget for?
The anticipated cost is about three hundred dollars an acre. So if every year we probably be pulling forward something around three thousand, four thousand dollars. We haven't received a formal quote, but that, that's what the DNR has told me is a reasonable budget item. And I believe in the past, we have funded items through storm sewer funding. So that there is, there is a potential funding source there, but it's not one that's been explicitly laid out in our, in our budget for the future years.
All right, that, all right. The Healthy Lake Winona Group has worked with John and has done some research on the side, the possible side effects of this, of this pesticide. And we've, we are comfortable with that part of the plan. I think three to four thousand dollars a year for five years would be quite acceptable to me for the city to go ahead and take that on. I think it would be a benefit for fishing and for, and for the general looks of the lake. And, and I think we should go ahead on that basis. But not just for one year. So how do you all feel about that?
I personally would agree with that, too.
I would, too.
Anybody else? Any comments, George?
Yeah, George here. John, what's our financial responsibility for this one year?
The city would be responsible for potentially funding everything upfront with reimbursement for up to eight hundred dollars. So our anticipated cost this year, our share was probably within the neighborhood. So our anticipated cost this year, our share was probably within the neighborhood of $2,500, I would, I would guess. We would, we're using for delineation to determine exactly where the curly leaf pond weed is. That's the requirement of the DNR's payment permit and this grant. And then we would pay for whatever, whatever remains of the herbicide balance that's not covered by the grant.
Okay.
Councilmember Scholmeyer.
Go ahead, Paul.
John, are you thinking that we would be looking at treating more than the 12 acres that's shown in the exhibit on our agenda, or treating the whole lake?
As, as the rules are currently with the DNR, we require, require that the lake vegetation management plan treat more than about 12 acres. If you're allowed to treat up to 15% of the lake without a, a formal lake vegetation management plan. So we would, we would hopefully in future years have a lake vegetation management plan where we could treat additional areas. However, we don't have that plan yet. We don't have that formal approval permit. So at this stage, we would start with that, that 15% or about, which comes to about 12 acres. And we would be able to do that without the like lake vegetation man, management. So we could always treat at least that much every year without seeking a more formal approval. But I think the plan would be to probably expand that some, I work with the DNR to come up with a, a liquidated management plan. We, I've seen a few other studies in other lakes in Minnesota where they've done more extensive treatments, and they've gotten, they've gotten faster results.
Councilmember Scholmeyer with a follow-up question.
Go ahead, Paul.
John, so just looking again at the exhibit, in the past, when we did, we'll call it weed management, using the weed harvester. The staff used to cut alleyways from the boat landing across the lake south to the south shore. Would it be possible to take a, a section of that 12 acres, let's say, an acre? So a narrow strip across the lake so that there could be an alleyway to allow boaters to get to this area that we're clearing?
It, it, it would be possible to clear that with harvester, but it's effective, it has to be done every year. And we found with weed harvester, it's truly only good for putting a very small amount of area. It, it won't, it doesn't have any long-term, you know, control, it doesn't fill the plant, it just cuts off the top of it and tends to grow back the next year. So we've, we've been hesitant to embrace that because it, it, it won't have any effect beyond immediately what we cut. It's gonna grow back for sure.
Yeah, I apologize. I, I think I wasn't clear enough. Could we, I wasn't thinking about using the harvester to make that, that path, but using the, the treatment as part of this grant to make a path?
Yes, my, my understanding is that would, that would be allowed. I think the way we structured the, the grant agreement for the grant application was to do this section area. So I would have to confirm that that would be allowed. But I think that as long as we're not covering more than 12 acres, that should be, be possible to use, to use the herbicide there. I think we've come across a similar type piece where if there's making pathways, they would be more likely to be regrown by the curly leaf pond weed. So it wouldn't necessarily have a very long-term effect. I think the more we kind of have concrete section, the better odds are of having, having better control. Because there is only be hard to receive and the, to refill in by the curly leaf pond weed.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak?
Mayor George here.
Okay, go ahead, George.
John, if this is passed here tonight, would we be able to see any results after one year to see if this is actually working, or does it need more time than the year?
We should see results this year in areas we treat. So I, I believe that that area would look quite different. I have, I have, I have not, I think we've done it in the past by mapping it for past treatment to see how it's changed. But what I've been told is that within a couple of weeks, you really see a very immediate dieback of the curly leaf pond weed. So it should look very different and would give us a, you know, flavor of what the lake could look like if you're doing the treatment elsewhere.
Okay, thank you. Like I say, you know, I'm certainly in favor of trying this one year. You know, if we want to go further, I think that would, well, that would be us to direct the manager to put this money in the budget. But I'm for just taking a look, see what happens. If this is going to be a, a very good project, we're, we're gonna see results, then I certainly would support going longer than that. Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to vote? All right, let's vote.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurli.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Iden.
Aye.
Porzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
All right, motion passed.
On to item 4.2, the VCS Automotive Jazz Creation Fund Resolution of Support.
I, Michelle Alexander, make a motion to support the VCS Automotive.
Aye, Al Thurli seconded that motion.
Here we have a motion by Michelle, seconded by Al. Comments? Hearing done. We'll vote.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurli.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Iden.
Aye.
Porzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
All right, motion passed.
Moving to new business, item 5.1, the call for public hearing, the Commonwealth Company Propose Application for Assistance. This hearing would be held on May 4.
I, Michelle Alexander, moved to set the public hearing for May 4.
George seconded that.
All right, we have a motion by Michelle, and a second by George. Any discussion?
Paul Scholmeyer.
Okay, Paul.
So when the plans come up, I know that we have a lot of the plans in store and, and rebuilding or reconstruction of Mankato Avenue. You know, we talked about this before. I, I, I am concerned about how the, the traffic will be coming out of, out of this development. So I'm hoping that when we move forward on this, that there's good discussion for some potentially alternative exit choices from this development. That's, that's all.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor George here.
Okay, George.
Yeah, just in response to Paul's question, I know there has been discussion at some of the meetings I've been in that the roundabout, if one goes in there, that will not hinder the development or any other traffic. And from the last I heard, it would be a right out only from that development. And then, of course, there's also, you can kind of sneak through the back way there, too, to get out onto Mark Street or Louisa Street, you know, the other roads down there. So, but it's far from done, but I know that was talked about, so.
Okay, thank you.
Al here.
Okay, go ahead, Al.
I just wanted to state that I, I appreciate this company's persistence in trying to help us develop workforce housing. It's a critical, critical need. As you know, in the council agenda, there's zero of that type of housing in our community right now. So again, I wholeheartedly support this application. I hope they're going to be successful in getting the money that they need and the grant opportunities they need to make this work for us and for our community.
Thank you. We're ready to vote? All those in favor? No, no, no. Do what you want to do for it.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurli.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Iden.
Aye.
Porzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Moving on to item 5.2, the plant review for the main square annex.
George here, I move to approve the attached resolution.
I, I, Michelle Alexander, second.
Okay, motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Any comments or questions?
Al here with a question.
Okay, go ahead, Al.
You know, I support this, unfortunately, you know, having spent a lot of time in that building, but it's understandable in its current condition that this seems to be a, a correct way to move forward. My only question is, I'm, I'm kind of curious about how traffic will be managed in and out of the development, but I'm sure that will take place and those questions will be answered going forward as the project progresses. I don't know if anybody would have an answer to that.
Councilmembers, this is Carlos Espinoza.
Okay, go ahead, Carlos.
So the overall project for the auditorium lot is future construction of a structured parking facility. And there's a number of approvals that would apply to that specific project that would happen in the future. One of those is a conditional use permit from the planning commission. At that time, the commission will address traffic. In addition, we will take a look at traffic during site plan review for the proposed parking structure.
Good, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, we'll vote.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurli.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Iden.
Aye.
Porzakowski.
Aye.
And Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Next item is 5.3, the bluff intermittent stream stabilization grant contract.
Move to approve the motion to execute the contract.
Eileen seconded.
One second, is that Pam?
I, that was me, excuse me.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Pam. Questions, comments?
Mayor, I have a question. Pam, I didn't hear. Yes, I'd like to know the location of these, of these catch basins. I mean, I do, I do agree that it's none too soon for us to get at this, but could I have some explanation of where these are?
John Howard will answer that question.
Mayor, council, the, the two sites that are proposed for this grant are, one is off of Skyline Drive. That's the first in, outfall to Skyline Drive to think of off Carbonite Road. And that drains currently down through some of, some of the trail complexes and out of buildings. And, but eventually outfalls to the cemetery stormwater line. The second place is off of, it's at Midway down Ridgeway, Ridgeway Drive. And that, that right now is intermittent, intermittent stream that would go towards the St. Mary's campus and eventually Gilmore Creek. And that, that was a quite safe trail complex, but it is a pretty severe erosion area.
Yeah, this is, this is really excellent. And like I commented earlier, this is none too soon for this.
Any other comments or questions?
Councilmember Scholmeyer.
Okay, go ahead.
John, so I, I'm pretty familiar with the one off of Skyline Drive. Seems to me there are a couple more that come down through the cemetery area. How many additional catchment basins are we looking at having to maybe construct going forward?
There, I believe, I don't have the spoken to it now in front of me, but I believe there are at least another three that are kind of severely eroded. We do, we have, we view them all, we do have spreadsheet looking at conditions. The, we want to make sure that this, this is sort of a, a title project, if you will, to, to ensure that this method will work. It's one that, somewhat unique to our area in having, having the bluffs and the high degree of storm water coming down from them. But our, theoretically, this is proven to be successful. There'd be those three good candidates. And there are probably better eight storms or outfalls that potentially might be suitable for assembly type treatment of a bluff.
Councilmember Scholmeyer again.
Go ahead, Paul.
I just wanna, I wanna, you know, from a Healthy Lake Winona standpoint, I know we've talked about this in discussing the trails and, and the whole work that's been going on. You kind of have that little corner. I just want to thank John and, and Healthy Lake Winona for, you know, kind of looking at these things and, and finding resources to, to abate the problem. It's very commendable.
Councilman Thurli here.
Go ahead, Al.
Couple of questions. First of all, John, who, are these, are these catchments going to fill up and will have to be removed? The sediment in there would have to be removed eventually?
That's, that's certainly a possibility. We, we, I, I don't know exactly how it's going to play out in terms of how much is caught versus just slowed down and, and filled in as it goes down the bluff. Our, our best, my, my best guess is that maybe every five years, there'll have to be some sort of cleanup of these areas. But it, it is hard to say at this point without, without really knowing exactly what, what's coming out of the storm, to what it could look like. And maybe I, I, Keith, do you have any thoughts on, on maintenance for these?
I anticipate it mainly to be clean water going through these, and it'll, it'll stop or slow down the erosion down below them. So I don't see them as cleaning out being needed very often, to be honest. Just gonna slow down the water, which is great.
Okay, I, I just have, you know, we have a number of those already in place, I think, right above Woodland, or at least one that I remember that was a, a clean out, or at least a process where some of the water coming down would settle first, and they've been cleaned out in the past. But I like the idea that this is a process that uses the native trees and vegetation to actually build it. And, and it kind of solves two problems by removing the, probably the non-native trees, at least I think they are, and, and then slow down, as Keith Nelson said, the, the erosion going down the hill.
And you're correct, it was our non-native trees that we used.
Yeah.
Any other comments? I think we're ready to vote.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurli.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Iden.
Aye.
Porzakowski.
Aye.
And Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Oh, motion carried.
And next is council concern.
All right, we'll start with Eileen.
You started with me last time, wow.
Did I?
It's the, it has to be the, the blessing of Zoom.
Better up by the frame.
Well, I just wanted to echo what the city manager said at the top of the meeting, that it is library week. And I'm so grateful for our wonderful library staff who have been creating all sorts of wonderful remote programming. So be sure to, to tell them hello. And happy Earth Day. And I was, I know Chad mentioned this earlier. I was out on the lake paths over the weekend, and it was good to see people out. But just want to remind folks that you do still need to be mindful of keeping distant from people when you are outdoors. are outdoors. Six feet doesn't suddenly get smaller just because you're outside. So please be cognizant of that, especially if you're passing people on the paths. And tomorrow is the, uh, four-year anniversary of, um, our Minnesota Treasure Prince Passing. So everyone listen to the Purple Rain album this week. That's all.
Thank you. Paul?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. A couple of things, um, related to, uh, councilmember Moller's, uh, comment about the lake. We have a beautiful city, um, very walkable community. And, um, I, I don't want to discourage people from going down by the lake, but we have some wonderful neighborhoods to walk through and, and I would encourage, uh, community members to, um, you know, explore and adventure their own neighborhoods to, uh, see what they're like, uh, and just be a sidewalk. The other thing is, I, I want to thank our, our tech person, Brad, for making this possible. I know our staff has been working really hard, uh, with the conditions that we've been under the last number of weeks. I, I, I do have some concerns about, um, our, our public hearing format, uh, via Zoom. And I'm concerned that, uh, some people are, are either reluctant, not able to manage the technology, or able to get their comments in. And so I'd, I'd like to maybe explore that a little bit further or see if we need to tweak it a little bit. I did get some messages about, uh, the, the public hearing for the planning commission last week on Monday and, and some concerns about not being able to make comments. So, um, you know, just like to investigate that a little bit more. And thanks to everybody for all the hard work they, they're doing. City manager Sarvi and, and chief Biddle, working and collaborating with the county, um, and the department of health and, and, uh, kind of getting us, uh, the information and services that we need here in our community. That's all.
All right, thank you. Pam?
I'm, I just want to wish everyone a happy Earth Day. Tomorrow is Earth Day and it's the 50th anniversary of the first birthday. And it looks like it's going to be a great day and we need to celebrate this glorious clat, planet that we live on. That's all.
Michelle?
Oops, sorry. I just need to echo Paul a little bit there. I heard from a few of the, um, members of the planning commission as well as the public and I don't know if we can explore accepting emails that can be read, but I think a lot of people struggle with the technology aspect of it and then things just go wrong, um, with your service and their service. And, uh, they were a little concerned about their input, uh, not being recorded. And, uh, maybe we can, um, see if there's another option or alternative to allow for, uh, emailing in and the chair reads them, I'm not sure. And then I had a few, uh, insurance agents contact me and I did have a chat with Brian earlier and he assured me that the pumps were running in, in, um, East Lake, but, uh, quite a few more people's basements have flooded with water and they've been making claims. And, uh, I think it was reported publicly that perhaps the city didn't turn on their pumps this year, but Keith, please confirm for me that we did indeed turn on our pumps and that, uh, maybe we're just in a new series of high water and it may be something they need to mitigate in their own homes. That's correct, Keith?
Absolutely, the pumps have been on for a long time.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to have someone on city staff confirm that, um, because I just had a couple of calls from some insurance agents that had had additional claims of houses on 11 Streets towards the lakes. And I was sure that there would be no reason we went to turn the, the pumps on. Otherwise, I'm just, uh, wishing everyone a happy spring, take advantage of the weather. Gardening is a great activity to do outside that still allows you to be, uh, distance from others. So, um, I'm going to encourage you to, to do that. Not only will it make you feel better, but it gets you outside and you can see kind of other people moving by and, um, it doesn't make you feel quite as alone at home. Otherwise, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Al?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. There was a press release, uh, that came out from our city engineer today and I think most people in the city would be, uh, very happy to know that the mill and overlay projects have already gotten underway, uh, as of today, according to the press release. It will be a little inconvenience for a while, but a, um, much improved road surface after everything is finished, especially, uh, when Huff Street gets finished, uh, you know, off of Highway 61. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, George.
All right, we're going east tonight, huh?
Yeah.
Uh, the HRA Board of Directors, which, uh, is scheduled to meet tomorrow, uh, that meeting will not be held and we will try to resume again in May. Also, uh, that was very good news about the mill and overlay, uh, makes a lot of people happy. I know in, in my ward, uh, they're beginning out along Highway 43, so it's good to see the equipment out there, so. And then also, when they get to, uh, this dredging of, of the river out there, I know it's, but I've questioned it and then it's also been, believe it in email, that we do meet with our marina operator before they start dumping sand over there and, uh, and just take his concerns that he has for that area. In fact, it's our concern as well, so.
I, I can't guarantee that they will meet beforehand, but they will meet as soon as they possibly can. That you could tell the river dropping, the channel is filling in really quick. They got to get that navigation channel open.
And, uh, having an open channel certainly is a benefit to Winona as our port authority is a very, very big part of that river, so. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, George.
And next on the consent agenda, there are two items, approval of the minutes from April 6th and the final adoption of an ordinance to put a stop sign at Chestnut and Fifth Street.
Councilman Thurling here, I would motion to approve the, uh, agenda for the consent agenda.
I guess I'll take the second, Michelle Alexander.
Okay, motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor? Michelle or Monica will ask. Aye.
Councilman Thurling.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Iden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Shoemeyer.
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Mayor, uh, George here, I move we adjourn.
I, Michelle Alexander, second.
All right, we have a motion by George, seconded by Eileen. All of us in favor?
Mayor Peterson.
Or Michelle, or Pam, anyone, but not me.
Aye.
We're out of here.
Somebody seconded it.
Councilwoman Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Iden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Shoemeyer.
Aye.
All right, motion passes and we adjourn.
Good night, everyone.
Good seeing you all online, good night.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.